Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, October 19, 2020. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you take us through tonight's agenda?
Absolutely. So we have roughly about 10 action items that we'll go through this evening. We have appointments at 6:15 for Class II license on BMD LLC. At 6:30, we're meeting with the Commercial Club, Don Ferbert, to discuss an ongoing adding pavilion to existing license for the liquor, I believe. And at 6:45, joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss new appointments.
Great. Thank you very much. Open forum. Is there anyone here for open forum? Mrs. Patrick?
Hi, Mrs. Patrick, Tom Clerk. I'm just here to basically update everyone on early voting, how it's going. So far, it's very successful. As of 5:30, we've had 638 voters, and that's from Saturday, just Saturday, Sunday, and today. Very steady Saturday, a little quieter Sunday, and extremely steady today. And early voting will continue until October 30th. We're open during regular business hours, so tonight till 8 o'clock, Tuesday to Thursday, 8:30 to 4:30, Friday, 8:30 to 12:00. Saturday and Sundays, 9 to 1:00. We have a new ballot drop box. If you hadn't noticed it, it's right at the front door, directly to the right. It's bigger than the mailbox, and it'll hold over 1,000 ballots, but we empty it twice a day, so there's never going to be that many. As far as the vote by mail, that was very successful. We mailed out over 300 ballots between early voting and absentee voting. We've gotten quite a few back. I don't have the exact count of what we've gotten back, but probably not even half yet. And they are coming in by trades from the post office daily. And I think that's about it so far.
Somebody asked me if they requested a mail, a ballot by mail, but they changed their mind and they decided they wanted to do early voting or in-person voting.
If they want to vote in person or vote at the polls, they just have to sign a roster stating that if, like if they voted today, obviously today that ballot is going to be the one that counts. And if that one that we mailed them that they said they're not going to return happens to come back to us, we've already rejected it, and it's just going to be in the rejected pile. And so the affidavit says that they understand that the ballot that they cast today will be the ballot that is counted, and nothing else that we receive from them can be counted.
Great. Thank you.
Questions?
Yep. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Very much. That's a lot of hours to cover, so.
It is. I have some election workers, you know, coming in and covering the early voting. And, you know, we're in and out in the course of the day, making sure everything's running smoothly. They have all the supplies they need, and everything's, so far, so good. Going well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Anyone else for open forum? Chris?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good. How are you?
Mr. Buckley, Veterans Agent. Wanted to give everybody an update on our veterans ceremony for Veterans Day. After talking with the PAC, with our Patriotics Committee, it will be on the 11th on Veterans Day, 10 o'clock, over at the Common, similar to what we did for Memorial Day. Before the meeting, I did send everybody out an email. If you guys would like to be there and speak, like I said, we'll build that into the agenda. I'll send the agenda out the week prior. Our state representatives have been notified too. As far as I know, Senator Timolty's office is the only one that's reached out to me so far. Other than that, pending any questions, just wanted to give you guys heads up and see if you guys anything you wanted to put in.
Do you have a backup plan for inclement weather going to the high school?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're working on. And like I said, hopefully the auditorium or the gymnasium, whichever one they, they would, you know, see fit for.
Great. Good.
Job as usual.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks. Have a great night.
We have a revolving seat of department heads tonight. Hey, Chief.
Me and Deputy Chief want to bring it up to speed a little bit. We are hiring one full-time officer. We're down a couple of guys. We did a little look back. Back in 1997, we had 25 officers. We had 8,200 calls. Back in 2000, we had 25 officers. We had 5,700 calls for service. Back in 2004, we had 25 officers. We had 11,000 calls for service. 2010, we had 20 officers. We were at 11,000 calls for service. 2019, we had 21 officers and we had 25,000 calls for service. They're just going up. Calls for service will be a little bit down during COVID because we haven't been pulling over motor vehicles. We're down about 1,000 motor vehicle stops this year compared to last year. So that's the only difference there. So what I'd like to do is put a plan together. I'd like to eventually put on three. I'll send you a plan with spreadsheets, how it'll affect our budget, what it'll look like, and I'll email it all to you individually. Then you can just email me back questions if you have it all. So we are going to go forward with one hire now. We're going to try to get them into the academy once they announce it. The Randolph Academy starts February 8th, and the Plymouth Academy starts.
March 1st.
March 1st. So whichever one we can get in first, we're going to go for.
Okay.
And we are in the process of putting eight permanent intermittents on, which doesn't affect the budget at all. They're all trying to go through physicals to see if they can pass to become police officers. So that's where we're at with that.
Can you just explain for people what a permanent intermittent officer is?
What it is, is you take the civil service test. You score high enough, and when departments are looking to hire, what we do, what we've always done here in East Bridgewater is we put you on as a permanent intermittent. That way, we get to see how you are, how you act before we make a huge investment in you. If it, if it doesn't work out, then there's no requirement that the town keep you, so we can find out what the character is of that person in case we miss anything in backgrounds. But 99% of the time, they're really great candidates.
Excellent. Thank you.
What do they actually do, Chief?
BIs?
Yeah.
They'll go through a field training program. We'll allow them to work details once they're certified. They go to a permanent part-time academy. We have two starting a part-time academy tonight in Plymouth, and it's six months.
Yes, six months.
Six months long of every night during the weekend, Saturday. So it's, they do it on their own. It's a big commitment. So that's how they, a lot of times, they prove their wealth there. They help out at all the town events, and we can see if their, their community involvement prior to hiring full-time and see whether or not they'd be a fit for the town of East Bridgewater.
It's a great way to get a look at them. It's like our farm system pretty, you know, pretty much you get to see them firsthand. A lot of the big towns and cities, they, they just hire right from the civil service list full-time. They go right in, and sometimes they have candidates that, you know, they wish they got to see for a little bit. So the smaller towns, it's a reserve or permanent intermittent where you get to pretty much see the candidate, you know, and what, you know, how they act, et cetera. But they go through an FTO program as well. They don't do cruiser shifts, but we get, we get to see them in every aspect of the job, pretty much.
When do you hope to have this? I might have missed the date. When do you hope to have the employee on, Chief?
Well, he'll have to go to the full-time academy, and that either starts February 8th or March 1st.
The waiting period after the, after that, after the academy at all, or?
No. He goes right into the FTO program. He's been a PI. This candidate's been a PI for 13 years. He just hasn't taken the full-time slot. Now he's ready. So he's a great worker. He's a phenomenal worker.
Now, it works is when you, you could appoint a reserve and intermittent full-time, and they have up to a year to go to the full-time academy. So they can work the streets with their reserve part-time academy for up to a year before, you know, because sometimes you can't get them in, obviously, right into a full-time academy right away. So you can get a waiver for up to a year where they could patrol, et cetera, and do the full-time job.
And then just a quick reminder, the senior, Senator Nancy Hill has sponsored the shredding event on Saturday. Will be part of it for the DEA drug takeback. So just to remind everybody if they have anything.
Excellent.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night. Thanks for coming in. Anyone else for open forum?
Go ahead, Carol. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
What am I doing? Song and dance? I think we've had enough of that. All right. Well, seeing no one else for open forum, I will close open forum. It's early for our appointment, so we can move to some action items.
Sure. Action items. Let's see. First, approval minutes of January 28, 2020, 6:30 PM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sign the clerical union contract.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ryan, do you have anything?
Are we discussing?
No, we worked really hard to bring this to fruition, and I want to thank the Clerical Association for their work, and this is represented tonight only by Sue, I guess, so we have a second seat. Oh, there you are. So we can actually affect the signing this evening.
I would think that's a good idea. If everyone's in favor, please say aye. All right.
Approve the request from Chuck Coran.
We're going to sign it. We'll sign it. Yeah.
And this expires June 30.
This is only till June. So we'll see you again soon. We opening negotiations next Monday.
We have a meeting set up yet?
Hopefully not for a while.
At least till after the holidays, right?
Take a good vaccine. How about that?
Well, I don't think we want to wait that long.
Thank you very much.
Yes, that's true. All the holidays are canceled. Thank you very much. Thanks to everybody that worked to get that done. We'll sign it after our meeting. So, okay. Back to you.
Okay. Approve the request from Chuck Coran of East Bridgewater Quonis Club for the use of the Town Common to display a 12-by-18 sign to support field of flags from October 10th through November 14th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Approve the sale of $943,809, 1.25% general obligation bond anticipation notes. The town dated October 30th, 2020, and payable July 15th, 2021, to Piper Sandler and Company at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $3,190.07.
Second for explanation.
Discussion? Explanation? Mr. Noble?
We have a ban on anticipation note that we issued shortly after I arrived. Treasurer did anyway. Did you want to come up and explain this better than me? And we're getting ready to, we're going to ban this one more period to July, and then we'll have a bigger note to do because we'll have the school rule for $2,317, plus the ban at $943,809. And we're going to, it's called refunding. I would call it refinancing. The school bonds that we have out that would save us about $4 million bucks, we're going to do that all at once. And we'll do that after July 1st, the ban expiring on the 15th. So we'll put it together right after the 1st of July and put this all out at one time. Makes it worthwhile.
Any questions or further discussion?
No. I'm good.
All in favor, say aye.
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 In connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation, distribution of a notice of sale, preliminary official statement dated October 1st, 2020, and the final official statement dated October 13th, 2020, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
Again, second for explanation.
Yes, please. What does that mean?
I'm going to defer into the treasurer, but basically this is the.
Processes I have to go through to do the bond, and like I have to update the official statement. And I am the person who says, yeah, this is really what's happening. I did it. I approved. It all has to be voted on by the board. These are all action items that are required legally to finish this ban.
Okay.
There's nothing individual that's different than any other ban before bond borrowing we've done. It's just our law, our bond council requires these items to be spelled out, voted, so the town clerk can say, yes, it happened.
Okay.
There's nothing, I mean, I give the official statement every year, and then I do it every time we do a borrowing as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 To authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance of federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'm good. Okay.
To authorize each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certifications, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And look at that, right on time for our 6:15 appointment for a Class II license. Do you want, do you want to come up?
I have to read the public here.
Peter, can you read the appointment? Thank you.
Class II license, BMDLC 2612 Plymouth Street, East Bridgewater, Mass. 02333. Restrictions is office space only. No retail sales of vehicles on site. Cars may be housed inside the warehouse due to the value of the vehicles. Vehicles may not have advertising information on them, such as for-sale signs, pricing info, et cetera, and no signage on the premises indicating auto sales. No customers on site to shop or purchase vehicles, as it is the interest-based business.
Great. Thank you. Hi. I'm good. How are you?
Good evening, sir.
Introduce yourself for the.
I'm Daniel DeSantis. I'm sure that you might have remembered me from, I was in Brockton for 39 years at a Chevrolet dealership. I have since moved to, well, my business moved to Noel, Massachusetts, which I just sold a couple weeks ago, which was a high-line, our ultimate series car dealership, McLaren Boston. Decided to slow down a little bit and just sell the cars online to customers that I've earned over the last 40 years, so 39 years in the business. So it's been very good to me, and the location I have has got good storage to, the cars are quite expensive, so they have to stay inside. So the location's got nice indoor storage, and everything will just be, it'll just be moving cars in and out. It's not going to be, like I said, not going to display other little guys, not going to be out there waving their hands saying, so.
Looking for that job, too.
It's not available. I'm sorry.
Would have been great at it.
Stay here, then.
And we probably can't afford cars either, so.
I was going to ask the president, why bother?
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Any questions or?
Oh, I just want to welcome Dan. We've got some mutual friends. I know I've dealt with you in the past. It's great to see you come to town. I wish you all the success and hopefully the business does extremely well for you as in the past.
Thanks so much.
It was great operation. I bought a couple of cars over there, so it's a great operation.
I did, too.
One in every crowd.
I can't remember how many, how many Suburbans came from DeSantis Chevrolet that came to my family.
My wife still drives one every day, so.
Excellent. All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the Class II license.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Yes, sir. Welcome to town.
They sign this tonight. Would you like me to mail this to your home address?
Just made the home address.
Sounds good.
Thanks very much.
Welcome. Now, we have to wait till 6:30?
Correct.
Anybody got a?
Finish the action items.
A few more here. Yeah, I mean.
Well, the action items. The action items are related to the planning board appointment. Well, do we have to wait till 6:30?
Yep.
Yep.
We have to wait till 6:45 for the planning board?
Yep.
Great. Zach, go to commercial. Actually, yes, maybe we could move to the town administrator report.
Thank you. I'm happy to fill in.
That's an excellent idea, Mr. Noble.
So the first thing I'd like to tell you is some really good news. The Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, has delivered two additional checks for reimbursement totaling $192,308.98. So we certainly want to thank him for processing our request for care of that money in a very expeditious manner. By the way, while we're handing out compliments, we wouldn't have gotten this money quite so quick. We are getting it quicker than other towns are getting it because of the quality of our filings, which is really to be credited to Rebecca for all the hard work she does, so.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Outstanding. I'd like to bring your attention to a public hearing to be held on Wednesday, October 21st at 5:00 PM, which will be hosted by Tracy Costa, who is our engineer for the price, for the precise engineering environmental cleanup grant filing for the EPA grant. This is a hearing that will be held on Zoom, and there will be login information available on the website, so we'll be able to allow the public to view and/or comment. And hopefully, we won't be Zoom bombed, but it would add for entertainment value to an otherwise boring thing.
Tracy positive about this one?
This, I actually added this up. This is our 17th filing.
I was going to say, I know we're in the double digits.
But we've had one success, and that was pretty good. So, you know.
We get credit for tenacity.
Yes. At some point, we may have to discuss alternative ideas. The Board of Assessors, we, Paula, myself, Phyllis, and Melissa met today, and we're pretty close to finishing our paperwork in preparation for the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen to set the tax rate. And they're requesting a meeting of the Board of Selectmen prior to the November 16th regular meeting, and have suggested, if it works for the Board, November 2nd. Okay. I'd also like to inform the Board that there'll be a department head meeting on Tuesday morning, the 27th of October, and we're bringing in Maya to do a little speech, which will be available online for those who can't attend in person and those who can, to reinforce the procedures of entering property claims on, properly on workers' comp, property and casualty, and injured on duty. And also, we'll spend a little time on the Maya grant and Maya rewards programs, which have been well-received by our departments in town. And because of COVID, we are falling a little behind on that, and I hate to give up money. So we're going to reemphasize that. Also, present for you this evening will be something I'll present to the, to the department heads, which would be the town meeting warrant. I'll circle back to that in just a second. So before you tonight is the latest draft of the warrant. From Friday until now, we were able to adjust the warrant slightly. Chief Harren has put in an item to move and reinstall the fiber optic cable that connects the fire department to the rest of the town. And that's about, he thinks, he's estimating about $20,000, but just to be sure, I put the number at 25, and we can always bring it down when we get to town meeting, when we have a more accurate quote. We have a little time to get that resolved. And one of the school projects has been removed from the list of wants, so we've adjusted that. And then we will take the remaining free cash that is left over from last town meeting and push it into capital stabilization and the general stabilization account. So we will actually have a, I think there's only about 13 items on the special town meeting warrant, but they're important to our, our town and to our department, including the use of the premiums on bonds, and also getting ready to go forward with what we had talked about, the refinancing, getting some things straightened out there. So that's pretty good. This is the night in which the Board will close the warrant, because we had it open for so long. That doesn't necessarily mean that if the Board felt it was necessary to post another item before we go to press, that we could add another item into the, by the Board's vote. So it doesn't close the door. Also, let you know that Chief Harren has let me know that he has accepted the specifications for the ladder truck and is about to execute the purchase order for the truck. So that's what I have, unless you wanted to go article by article, which we can do because we have time.
We don't have that much time.
The meeting on November 2nd with the assessors, that will be here at 6:30.
Correct. It could be at any time the chairman directs, but it would be November 2nd.
Do we need to check the planning board's meeting schedule?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Well, we'd use downstairs.
We can use downstairs, so we can meet earlier.
Yeah, voting will be over.
Or we could meet earlier.
Yeah, voting will be over. Yeah. So we could meet downstairs if there was.
Early voting.
Early voting.
You want to be careful.
Regular voting won't have happened yet.
The way we're going.
Vote early, vote often, right?
And Board of Assessors. Yeah. Board of Assessors.
Has to be available.
Right.
They can, we can do it earlier, too. They have a meeting usually at 6:00, and so we're just trying to.
But I think they actually booked the main conference room for that night.
The what? That one downstairs that we?
Main conference room. Mm-hmm.
Selectmen's.
For their meeting? So we can meet prior to their meeting downstairs?
Right.
Is that room big enough under COVID restrictions for all of us to be in there?
Yep.
The two? Oh, for just you guys?
Well, the two boards.
Yeah, the two boards.
We can separate. Enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So maybe 5:30?
Yes.
On the 2nd?
Yes. Would that work for you, Paula?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd rate with you.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
And that's what I have for you in my update.
Thank you.
And we still have some time to kill though.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, to give us a little update where we're at on, I know last, last meeting we talked about the health insurance. You guys meeting again? Where, where's that?
The GIC met, excuse me, not the GIC, the IAC met, and they had asked for.
To discuss the GIC.
To adjust this, to discuss it. And they'd asked for just a little bit more time so they could go back to their collective bargaining units and/or the people they represent, and to confirm that the direction that they want to go is to stay put at the moment. So we have another meeting on the 21st to make sure that we circle back, make sure everybody's been counted.
Great. Thank you.
No.
You have five minutes. Can you sing a song? Rebecca, how about staff reports? Anything? You have five minutes, Rebecca.
I touched on a lot of things.
Want to talk about Halloween, Madam Chairman?
Halloween. I, I, you know, I read today, Groton, Milford, I, I apologize because I don't remember the town, has actually like banned door-to-door trick-or-treating.
Tried five or six times.
And I'm sure there are more than one, but as far as we're concerned, this is not the role of government to interfere with people's Halloween celebrations, follow the state guidelines. If you choose to trick-or-treat and people choose to participate, that's up to them, and we are not going to say whether you should or should not.
We have received a lot of calls in our office regarding trick-or-treating.
And the response.
And I'm just advising them to visit the town website and, because we have put up the CDC guidelines and the state guidelines. So it's just kind of based on that. And if they want to participate, they can. If they don't, they can shut their lights off. That's just what we've been advising.
I've seen some really like creative ideas that people have come up with, with like, you know, PVC pipes as a chute that like sends the candy out to the kids.
Yeah, just be careful.
Put the five pavers on standby for that. But again, we are not taking an official stand on banning Halloween.
The only thing I guess.
All the holidays are canceled. There's.
The only thing that we should, again, keep in mind, if people decide to have, you know, their parties at home, especially with the huge increase we've had in the last couple of weeks, please make sure that you, you social distance and wear masks and do all the stuff that's required, you know, for home parties and anything else.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, that's still.
We just have to.
We're in the red, and it's not a good place to be.
Right.
That's absolutely true.
Great. 6:28.
Two more minutes.
Anyone in the audience want to sing or tell a couple of jokes? Paula, give us a joke. John Haynes, you must have a couple.
Alien out November 1st.
Remember your college days, John. Give us a couple.
Sure, Bill.
Larry, not you, because yours couldn't be put on TV.
The foliage on the Common is particularly lovely. The foliage on the common is particularly lovely this season, if anyone has the opportunity to drive by.
I've leaf-blown my colorful leaves five or six times now. It's been great.
No, it actually is really very stunning this year.
It is.
I took a picture out there a couple of years ago. It's on the website. That tree out there is really pretty.
There's one left that's still, right across from the church, that's still really, really, a lot of them lost the leaves this, over the weekend, but. Turn your heat on yet?
What heat?
November 1st.
I see, I always laugh at people who draw that line in the sand of, you know.
Heat, maybe, see, I'm gonna turn it on.
When you can make a snowman in the living room.
They went outside the other morning. We had heat on.
Yeah, oh yeah. We've had a couple fires in the wood stove. I'm sure Mr. Dowling has probably had fires in the wood stove since September 1st. I have no more small talk at this meeting.
You're good.
All right, here we go.
I say 6:30.
6:30. Mr. Spagone, would you read the, and if the.
That's the last 15.
Yes, you are here, Mr. Herbert, if you want to come up. And Peter, would you read the, your announcement?
Given suits to the clients, MGL Chapter 138, the caring will be held to the application for an amendment. Commercial Club, all alcohol license, this fall. Commercial Club, Mrs. Bridgewater, Donald Ferbert, manager, one, Nielsen Ave., adding an outdoor pavilion to existing license.
Okay, here we are. We did this, but we, there was a question on a butters, so we are doing it again so that everybody is included. So do you want to explain again what the, what the license is for?
As I indicated before, our current pavilion has been in full use for 40 to 50 years anyways. And we've served alcohol out there all along. And it came to our attention that the pavilion needs to be added to our on-premise license, and that's what this process is asking you to do.
Okay.
I know there was some question on the original application. We had 240, I believe it was. And we got the occupancy permit for 140, and it was down to that. Just quite often, we do have functions that will set up an additional tent to the side for like a larger wedding or a fundraiser and stuff like that. So, you know, if there's any consideration to increasing that a little bit for that reason, would appreciate that consideration, whether this is being reconsidered again.
Is this how it's worded? Planning and building a fire.
Okay. Hi, Carol, how are you? How's your husband doing? He's doing very well, thank you. Much better, thank you.
Good evening, sir.
We're just hoping to, you know, clarify the license and do as Don has presented to you. Just here to back him up with support, and we hope that you'll prove it for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, do we have, are there butters here? I figured those, do you, can we have them sit over there? Or if you guys want to come up, do you have questions or a statement or?
No, I mean, we, we got the letter in the mail to be here, so. Our backyard goes right up to the field for the club, and we support the license. We've never had a problem with the club. Public functions are wonderful, so there's no objection from us.
Great, and can you just say your name for the record?
John Elgliva, and Joseph, we're on North Water Street.
Okay, excellent. So you're here in support?
Yes.
Terrific. That's what we like to hear.
I'd like to thank them for their support there. We try to be good neighbors, and if we've ever had any complaint from anybody, we've rectified them as soon as possible.
Great, thank you. And then, anyone else here to speak on this? Okay.
So the description on the thing, the first floor is at a capacity not to exceed 300, basement not to exceed a capacity of 110, and the pavilion not to exceed a capacity of 140.
All at the same time.
If you do set up a 10, you need another permit.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but that happens quite often. I didn't know if we could increase the threshold, but.
Those numbers came from building? And fire.
Okay.
We appreciate the Board working with us and.
Of course.
Trying to help us. Everybody's struggling. As you know, the restaurants and stuff are having their outside tables and stuff. It's helped some. We'd just like to have the help, too. Thank you.
Oh, the pavilions are great. I've had a couple functions there myself, so. Any other questions or comments?
Are you serving food now?
Yes, we are.
Outdoor stove? Outdoor stove?
At certain functions, yes. Not on a regular dining basis. We encourage members who don't want to come inside that we will serve us some outside. But that, they've not taken advantage of that as much as we thought it might.
Okay, good.
At this point, anyways.
Good. It's always been a great place, and.
Good breakfast.
Never really heard any problems over there.
Anything, Peter?
Yeah, same thing. I mean, me and Larry go way back. Me and Don go way back. You know, Commercial Club's done a lot for this town. Anything we can do to.
Absolutely.
Help provide for you guys. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
All right, I will take a motion to approve the license then.
I'll make a motion to prove the addition of the alcohol license at the pavilion, outdoor pavilion, to the existing license.
Second.
Any further discussion? Paul, in favor, say aye. Aye. There you go. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming in and support.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank the Board and other folks in the hall for their support. Have a nice evening.
That was supposed to take 15 minutes, so don't go anywhere. You gotta sit there. I need you for another 11 minutes. This agenda is gonna kill us all. This agenda is gonna kill us all.
He may come back, and he said he has it. I mailed it today.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, well, we have 10 minutes now before the planning board appointment.
You can take it on yourselves.
You won't get the second one, though.
Here, we don't have to.
We don't have to wait on them?
Yep, and then I'll mail this tomorrow, and it should be relatively quick.
Do you want to have Rebecca go down and see if they're ready to?
If you want to bring the planning board in, see if they're here?
Yeah, I'll see if they're ready.
Since it's an action item and not an appointment, you're right.
Correct.
Very good.
Although they may be posted for 6:30.
Good evening, sir. How are you? Can't complain.
They may have posted for 6:30.
Thank you.
In which case, we'd have to, I mean, for 6:00, did they post for 6:00? What time did they post for is the question?
It would have had to have been the same because they have regular meetings starting at 7:00.
Okay.
We should bring up our gun and shoot this place before they start their meeting.
I loaned it to Sue.
They'll still be here until late. We can do it quick.
There's border health meeting tonight, too?
Planning board meets right after us.
Right, I know that.
Oh, they, they canceled the border health meeting. For whatever reason.
Yes.
They know that we're ready, so.
You can go into recess while you're waiting, then he can turn the camera on.
Oh, here we go.
Okay.
Johnny's gonna sanitize over there.
Don't shoot! When you guys leave.
Yeah.
Right now.
Am I the only one?
We got a roof.
Steve was downstairs.
Steve, out there.
The green one?
Mhm.
Okay, because I think we're gonna be down.
Oh, yeah, I got, I got two boxes of them, two boxes of tablets.
Sue, you've been using the gun, correct? You've been using the gun.
Yes, sorry.
So we probably need to put a refill in by now?
Get this for something else. Yeah, it's getting pretty low. Probably after we do that library trustee.
I have a gallon to already fill the solution.
Oh, okay.
So I'll just give you the gallon, and I'll keep refilling the gallon.
Perfect. Now, does the thing ever have to get charged, or is that?
Yeah, we have the charger.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a battery underneath.
Yes?
Did anyone have any concerns that they brought up at all?
I don't think so. Not that I will. All right, let me go see if we can find one.
Okay.
So what is this vacancy for? What is this vacancy?
Pretty snuff, I suppose.
The what?
Window zone.
Zach, do you have like the Three Stooges playing while we're in session here, waiting?
Who's the camera on? I just, is it on, Brian? I hope.
It's on, I'll forgive you.
Oh, great.
Good. All right, no scratching.
Don't worry, Brian, you're in the shot.
Oh, all right.
He misses.
Dave needs a TV.
He misses his monitor.
Yeah, I miss my monitor a lot.
Oh, we'll be here. I had a quarter off. It's not quite quarter off yet.
We were, had a, had a schedule for a change.
We're always at a schedule.
How is it to be back, Dottie? Is it like you never left?
Yeah, no, actually, it's nice. I like it because I get time off. You know, my husband says, "Want me to shut the car for you? Don't you have to work today?" So it's been, it's been nice.
Good. Well, it's nice to have you back after a brief hiatus.
Yes.
Mr. Belcher.
Ed and Rob are right behind me. Thank you. Assuming I can reach.
Steve, do you expect a caller?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's two now, and we'll have two more in a minute.
Good.
I heard you had a lot of people vote today. Yeah, well, for the head of. Peter? Yeah, it is a lot. Now, are you open on Monday? I'm doing it Saturdays and Sundays. We had 189 people on Sunday. I sound. Yeah, I agree, because you talked about that.
I could do two or three of them that night.
I don't know if you want to take a seat.
Yeah, what we're waiting for now is a member of Lyons is down.
The second, and then two weeks after that. Yeah, good. For the November 16th. The second is 16. 19. 16. Oh, she has a 19.
Ed Rob was behind you, wasn't he? He was.
Something you said it?
I just ran. I ran up the stairs.
Silence is called.
I hear footsteps. I hear footsteps.
No, that's me doing this.
Listen, you know my house, so you know.
Were you having ghost sightings around here lately?
It's the season.
I don't know, it is freaky when you're here late and the elevator goes by itself. That freaks me out.
The library elevator used to do a lot by itself back in the day.
When Mr. Lyons shows up, should we give him a standing ovation for moving this along?
You don't have pictures of Morris running around there, do you?
No, I've seen the pictures from your house. And heard the stories. Ghosts. He had ghosts in his house. Basset is belfry, ghosts in his house.
Really crazy.
Is there supposed to be ghosts here?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Mrs. Hope.
Mr. Lyons, welcome.
They've been waiting on you.
He's, listen, he's 6:43. He's two minutes early.
But he says we can move them on.
Okay.
They need to open.
No time.
Roy Garnon is on his way. Roy Garnon is on his way.
Yeah, so we have a forum now, so we will.
Open the meeting.
You can open your meeting.
So right now, it's 6:44. We're gonna open the joint meeting here with the, meeting with the planning board for a joint meeting with the East Bridgewater Selectmen. The purpose of the meeting will be to appoint vacant positions for a member and associate member. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Belcher. Shall we go right to the action items so that we can discuss?
Absolutely.
Sound good with you?
Yep.
Discussing. I'd like to hear from, you know, the two people.
Yeah, so if we do them one at a time.
One at a time, yep.
And just for the record, Associate Member Kevin Frye just walked in here.
Okay.
I'm gonna let you say your name. I don't want to butcher any names tonight, so Sheila, I know that. Is you Sheila? No? Oh, I'm sorry. Sheila, I wasn't sure. Sheila, how do you pronounce your middle and last name, I guess, or is you too typhoned?
Sheila Savoy-Glidden.
Thank you. We've discussed some points. Sheila Savoy-Glidden, as a member of the planning board, to fill a vacancy until the next election period.
Hold on a second.
Sheila?
Do you want to come up to the table? Have a motion and a second for discussion.
The motion to appoint is made by both of you guys.
You can sit right there.
Oh, okay.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Do you guys have specific questions?
Do you want to tell us why you, you know, have this interest in planning board, I guess, would be the.
Well, I'm a lifelong resident for 60-plus years, moved away for a short time and back in the homestead on Central Street. And just feeling to give back, I'm retired, I'm a clinician, clinical therapist. And just felt like I would like to give back. There were two positions open for an alternative, and then the board member that's regular. I thought I might be able to do the alternate, but I see that you have someone else. So anyway, I would like to give back some of my time to the town that I loved and grew up in.
Great, thank you.
So Sheila, do you feel that you have the time to put in to the board as a full-time regular as opposed to a?
Well, I have, I do kind of volunteer clinical work all over the country, and right now, we're doing Zoom meetings. And that's why I had preferred to be the alternative, because I do have some commitments for the next couple months on Monday nights, not every Monday night, but every other Monday night. And so that's, that's my only concern right now.
Okay.
We do meet every other Monday midnight, so if the schedule works out, it's going to be probably off.
Yeah.
So it's like our next one will be the Monday after this one, so.
Right, so I am gonna try to coordinate the ones. I do have one week, the next Monday, I am committed to a, to a group session on Zoom. So I would be missing one Monday night, but then after that, I can schedule around it.
Okay. Peter, anything?
I think the only thing that stuck out to me was it said you were in the real estate market, is that right, for 40 years? Is this?
Well, I've had my real estate broker's license for 40 years. I haven't been active for several years. I mostly wanted to learn the business for personal issues, and I worked for Jack Conway for a while. But I, I was at the time working for Barnes &amp; Noble College Division at Bridgewater State, so I had a full-time job.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything from the planning board? Did you guys want to add anything?
I was just making a noise, but Chairman Gardner just.
Welcome, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you.
Anything, did you guys want to add anything about this appointment, and then we would all vote together?
Let's hear from Mr. Lawler.
No. What's that?
Was you here for Mr. Lawler? I'm just wondering, my concern here is just the time factor on being a full-time member as opposed to an associate member. I'm just wondering, again, it's a combination. I'm just wondering, again, it's a combination of the boards, but we've had some problems with, you know, quorums and stuff like that now, I'm just.
Yeah, the last time I was here, there wasn't a quorum, so I understand that's why I wanted to just advance my schedule right, right at the beginning so that you wouldn't be disappointed with information that I hadn't shared. So, I do understand that.
Would you want to consider, would you want to consider swapping these and having Mr. Lawyer be the permanent member and having Ms. Glidden be the associate member?
How would you feel about?
I would, I would prefer that if possible.
Okay. Does the planning board have any? Well, let's hear from Mr. Lawler. If you want to, okay, Sheila.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawler, if you would.
Sure.
Front and center.
Front and center.
I need a reefer.
No, I guess not because we'll do it all together with both.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Can you just say your name for the?
My name's John Lawler. Been a resident of East Bridgewater for 41 years. So, I guess that makes me a newcomer. If you weren't born here, I guess, right?
That's what I say.
I wasn't either, though, so.
Yeah. So, I've, I've had my own business for 40-plus years, radio, TV, events planning, in between the automotive industry and the press. And I'm getting close to retirement too, but I still own my own business, you know?
No, you're not.
I, you don't think? But I love East Bridgewater, this is home. I moved out of Boston 40 years ago and this is where I've been.
And now, would you be available to do the, the permanent versus the alternate position?
Sure.
Okay.
What do you feel you can bring to the board, John?
Well, logistically, that's, that's what I did for years, it was logistics. So, I know how to get things done from start to finish. I started the New England Motor Press Association 40 years ago and I bridged the gap between the press, the automotive industry, and developed it into an event that we do annually with MIT, the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston. So, you know, I'm good at bringing things together and bringing things ordinarily that you wouldn't think would come together, like MIT, Museum of Fine Arts, Los Adesin, and the automotive industry. And it's a, was a win-win for everybody. So, I know how to find money and I know how to, I know how to get things done.
Good, well, we would like you to find a lot of money, please.
For all of us. We could all use.
But it goes to all the boards.
I didn't say found it for me. Yeah.
Great. Peter, any?
John, I guess my only question would be what your expectations of, you know, hopefully development in East Bridgewater, do you, have you, have any thoughts or ideas regarding any of that currently?
Well, I mean, I know what I, only what I've done with my own property, my real estate interests have been my, my house. So, I owned a house for 40 years, so, but as far as East Bridgewater, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful place and I'd like to make it more beautiful. And I think that's doable. My mom lives in Boston, in West Roxbury, and I noticed during the shutdown, she could walk, she's 90 years old, she could walk anywhere she wanted to go. She could walk to a Kavla, she could walk to a fish store, she could walk to a deli, and it's all within walking distance, and so we, there's not a lot here. So, I think maybe that's something that I could, I could help with is to bring some things in, you know? So, we could walk to something in East Bridgewater, you know? So, if you don't have a car, you're, you're kind of in trouble.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else, anything from the planning board? No, you guys are good. So, I think if you're willing and, and if Ms. Glidden is willing, we would swap those appointments. And if the planning board is okay with that.
I say it this way, let's make a motion that we swap the appointments. I think that's the correct way to approach this, I defer to the Chair.
I think, I think we have to do those separately anyway, so. I'll just make a motion that we nominate John Lawler for the full-time planning board member position.
Second.
Second.
To fulfill that position until the next regular election.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. And then, do you want to make the motion for the other one?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Sheila Glidden as our associate member to fill as the associate member until the next normal appointment date for that position.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Congratulations to both of you, thank you for volunteering and stepping up to do that. Look forward to working with you.
Me too.
Mr. Gardner, do you want to come up?
So, just a quick question to proceed here, I guess, does he need anything officially to go down to the town clerk's office to get someone in?
We'll send him a letter.
But can he go down tonight to do it?
Uh, we need to ask the town clerk. She just witnessed the appointment.
Well, we would need to give Sue a letter first too, right?
Yeah, I need the appointment letter.
For tomorrow.
I mean, you have your quorum, so you don't really need him to vote.
Understood, but, I mean, he, he can obviously stay and participate in the meetings if he's willing to do so, but he needs, you need an actual written letter before he can.
Yeah, I get a letter from them and.
That's fine.
Yeah, sorry.
How are you?
Good.
Thanks for coming in. How can we help you?
Well, I think I had a, I talked with Brian today, I think it's, Peter and I had a brief discussion with several other people present earlier, earlier in the month. There are two of our members that have indicated a residence to attend because of the COVID-19 situation. One of those simply will not be here until that's over. So, we're gonna try and work out a situation where he can participate remotely on a regular basis. We had one remote meeting early in the year, which the members weren't overly pleased with, so. Well, I think what we'd do now is we'd have our regular meeting, most of the members, a quorum would be present here in the, in the meeting room. And at least one of the members, pretty much for the long term, would be available via our virtual hookup, if we can get that done. Permanently indication he's willing to do that, so. With the appointment tonight and with him being available, that should directly address the, the unexpected quorum issue that came up when, when, basically, on very short notice, three of our members decided they weren't gonna, they weren't gonna continue. That's an unexpected situation in my 40 years on the board, so it was, and then on top of that, we had the situation with the COVID, which made things even a little bit more complicated, so.
Absolutely.
But I think, given that and with a new member appointed tonight and with a, with a second associate member available, I, we should be in good shape and shouldn't have quorum issues going forward, I wouldn't think.
Good.
Fantastic.
Okay.
He also has another request before the board.
Yep.
To start the hiring process to fulfill a vacancy in the administrative position.
You want to speak to that or Brian, do you want to explain it?
Yeah, we've been, we've been interimly filling that position, but as good as Dottie is, she is concerned about keeping up with it and has, and Mr. Gardner has approached me to, to start the hiring process to replace that position. And I think the board needs to say yes or no.
I make a motion to approve the position as requested by the Chairman of the Planning Board.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Can I just comment on that?
Of course.
I think, I think the issue that's come up right now is that the, the office has had two full-time people in the office doing the clerical administrative and legal advertising and all those other things for 20-some-odd years now. While we knew Doc was gonna retire, the expectation was with, at least my expectation originally, without check on anyone, was as soon as she retired, we'd replace her and the thought was we'd, we'd hire her basically per diem, part-time, to help the transition to whoever the new person in the office was gonna be. Understanding, given the current financial situation, it wasn't clear that we were immediately gonna be able to do that, but it's become obvious that we basically had two full-time people, it now is down to effectively one and a half people, which, my opinion, and I think in the planning board's opinion, is probably the building inspector's opinion as well, doesn't work in the planning, building department, so. Would appreciate getting that filled as soon as we could possibly do that.
Yep. No, you have to be able to function, you have to be able to keep up with the workload, so.
Do we have a, Roy, do we have a defined role for this employee yet?
Yes. Yeah, there are job descriptions for the positions that I think are pretty detailed.
Okay.
And Brian has those.
Okay. And I thank Mr. Gardner for his participation in creating that, so.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
Just, it's extremely necessary, I mean, we've got a, certainly got a help in that, in that department, and I think this is one step in the right direction. You know, we've discussed some other ones too that hopefully can move forward on in the near future, but this is certainly the right, the right way to go, I believe.
Good. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of proceeding with hiring or replacement, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get that done.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Oh, yeah, before we do it, I mean, this is kind of just off the cuff, Gary Skoschus Senior passed away.
See, I asked you, I should have asked you.
Yeah, the, last week, and, you know, not that we probably mentioned residents that passed, but Gary was such an influential person to myself and I know you guys probably as well, so I just wanted to make note that, thank his family and his dedication to the town of East Bridgewater over many, many years, and he'll surely be missed. I'm sure Dave's got a few words as well.
As I said, I know he, he had a very tough couple of months and I believe him and Joe